Okay, I would like to call this meeting of the Salem Kaiser School Board to order. It is five o'clock on November fourteenth. The Board will now adjourn to Executive Session to conduct deliberations with persons designated to negotiate real property transactions pursuant to O R S one nine two six six zero two E. Representatives of the news media are allowed to attend Executive Sessions except for those sessions held in regard to expulsions. All other audience members are excluded from Executive Sessions and are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during Executive Sessions except to state the general subject of the session as listed on the agenda. No recording of the Executive Session is allowed without express permission. Currently, the quorum exists. Jesse Lipold, Chuck Lee, Jim Green, and Paul Kylo. We will now adjourn to the Executive Session. Thank you. I call this meeting of the Salem Kaiser School Board for November fourteenth back to order. We are almost all present. We'll all now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All Board Members are present. And are there any other, are there any agenda modifications? Seeing none, we will move on to spotlights. Superintendent Perry.
All right, good evening, and we are going to go a little out of order. So we're going to start with our Business Partner of the Month, and Lillian Govis, our Director of Community Relations and Communications, will present that for us. All right, good evening. It's my real pleasure to invite Principal Craig Swanson with teacher Rhonda Couch, and our Business Partner, Darcy La Fountain. I promised not to make her name fancier than it was. So our Business Partner of the Month for November 2017 is Darcy La Fountain, owner of D L Photography, and she was nominated by Sprague High School. Four years ago, Darcy contacted Sprague and volunteered to take professional senior portraits for free for students who couldn't afford them. She was asked by a school counselor to talk to yearbook teacher Rhonda Couch, and a collaborative partnership was formed. Sprague seniors are invited to sign up for a time slot with Darcy on campus during a school day when all students are involved in all-day testing. Because these days depart from the regular classroom schedule, it's the perfect opportunity for seniors to come to school dressed for senior pictures. Darcy meets with the students outside or other places on campus to provide them a high-quality photo experience. Darcy grew up around photography. Her grandfather, Leonard Delano, was a professional photographer and owned Delano Photography in Portland. Her sister in Seattle is also a professional photographer, too. This year, D L Photography was recognized by the Statesman Journal with a silver medal in the Best of Salem 2017 Awards in the Photographer category. Along with senior portraits, Darcy also does wedding, family, children, and sports photography. Darcy says she wants to be a role model and set a good example for students of how business people can give back to their community, and the appreciation the students give has its own rewards. She says students are so appreciative, and she gets so many "thank you, thank you, thank yous." I'm sure their parents are saying the same thing. Senior portraits document an important milestone in a high school student's life. They're used in the yearbook, our remembrances shared with parents and grandparents, and they become more precious as the years pass, or in my case, embarrassing when you look back on them. But thank you, Darcy La Fountain and D L Photography, for capturing these special moments in the lives of our Sprague students who've really benefited from your special helping hand. Our next spotlight is going to be presented by Larry Ramirez, our Director of High Schools.
If I could call forward, Principal Schoper, Assistant Principal David Wood, Katrina and Ryan Hole, and the McKay Students. Tonight, we are pleased to recognize the award-winning Recycle 3D Science and Engineering Team from McKay High School. The team includes four McKay seniors, Lorenzo Alvarez, Luis Castro, Saul Martinez, Chavarin, and Christopher Flores. The students are led by McKay mathematics teacher Katrina Hole and her husband Tyler Hole. Tyler is an engineering student at Portland State University. The Recycle 3D Team has had amazing success in statewide science competitions against college students in the last six months. After seeing a lot of plastic thrown away every day at McKay High School, the McKay High School students decided to create a process and invent equipment to turn plastic waste into filament used by 3D printers. Tonight's recognition is timely because tomorrow is America Recycles Day. In June, their project won $2,500 in a competition at Portland State University. In September, they placed first in almost every category at PSU's Clean Tech Challenge. There, they took home a check for $22,500. In October, they placed second and won the People's Choice Award in the competition at the Oregon Museum of Science and Industry. There, they won $10,000. The prize money is being invested in 3D recycling equipment for McKay and college scholarships for the five students on the Recycle 3D Team. Mrs. Hole is proud of her students, of all her students have accomplished so far, and sees bright futures ahead of them. "It's been really fun to see students show what they can do given the opportunity," she said. "Congratulations to McKay High School students for showing everyone what you can do given the chance to succeed. Congratulations."
And our last spotlight, I'm looking to see if our presenter's in the room. Karina Lee, Executive Director. All right, Lillian Govis is going to stand in for Karina Lee, the Executive Director of Salem Kaiser Education Foundation. So, Lillian, thank you. We're really excited tonight to honor our Volunteer of the Month for November. We have Principal Gary Etjemendi here, our teacher Jill McAllister, and our very special volunteer, Ron Baker.
Karina's here.
Oh. And our very, very special Karina Lee is here.
Thank you. Well, Lillian, why don't you come do this with me? Come on. Thanks for playing backup. Appreciate it. Okay, so our Volunteer of the Month for November 2017 is a retired elementary school teacher, Ron Baker, nominated by the entire staff at Inglewood Elementary School. Ron volunteers every Wednesday morning at Inglewood in third-grade teacher Jill McAllister's classroom. He's been volunteering there for seven years. Ron usually gets to school at seven o'clock in the morning, and he gets right to work, says Mrs. McAllister. When he arrives, he does things like prepare bulletin boards and clean the classroom, things a teacher doesn't have time to do on a regular basis. On the academic side, Ron works with small groups or one-on-one with students who need a little extra support with reading or test-taking. Mrs. McAllister says that Ron plays several different musical instruments. Students love that. Classes on Wednesdays often begin with a 15-minute sing-along with the kids. Ron also speaks many different languages. Children for whom English is their second language appreciate a few familiar and kind words. For example, a friendly "good morning" in Marshallese to students from the Marshall Islands makes them feel welcome and at home. You're pretty amazing. Ron taught for 27 years at Bush Elementary School before retiring. That's where Mrs. McAllister first met him. When she was in college, Mrs. McAllister did a practicum in his class while working on her own education degree. Along with volunteering Wednesdays at Inglewood, Ron also volunteers on Tuesdays at Bush Elementary and on Thursday at Swiegel Elementary. When asked why he decided to volunteer, Ron said, "After I retired, I really missed working with kids. This is perfect for me because I get to come in and help out by doing what I love to do." Thank you, Ron Baker, for your commitment to education and your support.
Next item on the agenda would be public comment on items related to the agenda. I have the list. The first name I have listed would be Jim Aiken. You are allowed three minutes. At two minutes, the light will change color. At three minutes, you get this. So everybody's...
I'm taking my glasses off, so I can't see that.
That's okay. I can shout, too, so it's okay.
Right. Directors, Superintendent, very special Karina Lee. My name is James Aiken, 1982 Madras Street Southeast, Salem 97306, class of 74 South Salem, eligible Salem voter all my life and voted in every election. I have been a volunteer at Salem Kaiser Schools for 20-plus years, including two years on the TAG Committee. My daughter's class of 2006. I'm here to talk about the OSAA. I've submitted a letter. I'm hoping that you will forward this letter to the Department of Education. It's regarding equal opportunity for kids in education and athletics. I may take a piece from the OSAA rules on their webpage. Handbook can be revised during the year by Executive Board, by delegate. The long history of the OSAA's one statement has remained true: Schools control the rules in the OSAA. That means this organization, to my mind, has a tendency to stake with their rules, and their rules are out of date with today's society and what's going on in our world. Recently, as I pointed in my letter, we had a North Salem student, age 19, a refugee, denied the chance to play his senior year at soccer at North. Remember, I'm a Saxon, speaking for North, because all kids need our help, not the ones in our school areas, not the ones we see every day, but the kids down in McNary, McKay, even West. All kids need our support. I believe the OSAA, in the way the Oregon educational laws have been written with equal opportunity, has disregarded the opportunity for all kids, and I'm not talking just girls and boys, but we're talking about kids who have financial disabilities, kids who can't participate because of time, because of the different constraints. We have an opportunity here in Salem as a large school district to make a change. And I'm afraid to say, sometimes laws have to be made to make those changes. The equal opportunity law was written in 1970, in the 70s, with the help of my parents at the Oregon Legislature, which allowed my two sisters, my younger sisters, to participate in the first-ever state basketball tournament and win it for South Salem High School. The problem is for a lot of people is, my two older sisters do not get to participate. They are now judges, motivated because they were not allowed to participate. Sometimes that's a good thing, sometimes it's a bad thing. But what I'm saying is, we need to give kids all a chance to participate, because when you get the kids participating, they achieve more. And it's not just for special kids for athletics, but we can set up a program, develop the special kids who can go to the PAC-12 or other schools. Okay, I'm done. I solved the thought. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next would be, oh dear, is it Angie Livengood? Did I get the first name right?
Angie, yes.
Angie, okay. Oh, no, I can read it, I just wasn't sure.
My name's Angie Livengood.
Livengood, sorry.
And I live at 290 LaFell Street, South Salem 97302, and I'm here to ask the Board to appeal the decision entering us into the OSAA district with Bend. I have two kids currently at West Salem High School who play multiple sports, and not only, there's a lot of reasons why they shouldn't join conferences with Bend because of loss of class time and for the cost to the district, but my focus is more on safety. I believe that should be the first and foremost concern about, for all parents and all Board Members and all people in our district. My husband is a firefighter/paramedic for Tuauton Valley, and he also works for Lifelight. He worked in the Redmond's base at Lifelight for five years. I was hoping to get some really good numbers from them about how many times people have been flown off that mountain, but there really isn't as many. I was told that the numbers wouldn't help me, but they really kind of do, because there are very limited amount of number of flights off of that mountain because they don't fly between Black Butte and Detroit very often, because the weather is either horrible and they cannot fly, or there's no landing zones. So that means, because there's no cellphone service, about an hour and a half worth of time in that drive from, between Bend and Salem, you have to wait. So if there's an accident, and it will happen, because there are going to be busloads of kids, there are going to be family members, there are going to be kids who are 18 or older seniors who can drive themselves. So it will happen. Those people who have an accident in that space of time where there's no cell service have to wait for a passerby to drive, see the accident, drive to a place where there is cellphone service, dial 911, and then a volunteer fire department is going to come, and it takes them however long it takes them to get in their rigs, and then they will have to transport, and there will be most likely more than one patient, so it's a long time for transport time, which is unacceptable to me as a parent. And as a firefighter's wife, I know exactly what they have to do, and how many, our times when we live in, response times when we live in a place like this is a lot, is a lot quicker than we're used to. You can, a busload of kids could be stuck on that mountain for three hours waiting for a ride down, even if they weren't hurt. So in my mind, that's something that should be considered because of the cellphone coverage, the loss of coverage, and I think that it's a horrible decision to make, to put our kids into. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Okay.
Thank you. Kira Dovet, close? No, okay, not really, sorry.
Good evening. My name's Kira Dasowitz, and I live at 1245 Goldcrest Avenue Northwest in West Salem. I have a sophomore at West, and then I have an eighth grader at Howard Street, who are both very involved in different school activities. And I'm here to talk about the OSAA decision. I've learned a lot about OSAA and how they make their decisions in the last couple months. I attended their last meeting and testified there against this really bad decision, in my opinion, and I just want to reiterate some of the points that you probably are already aware of, because you've received a lot of emails, I'm guessing, and hopefully have done some research yourself, and you were here at the last meeting when the district attorney, or not the district, your school board attorney discussed this issue. So how was this decision made? It was made without community input. Based on the numbers from the last OSAA meeting, which were delivered by the athletic directors from the different school districts, there's over 7,000 students that participate in sports in Salem Kaiser. So this is 7,000 students and families that are impacted. And as one of those families, I did not know about this decision until the very last minute when Salem Kaiser was moved back into the league with Bend, before, in the multiple drafts that OSAA had, they were not a part of that. So I have a real issue that community input was not taken, community was not informed of this decision. There were many meetings, you know, there were 18 drafts of the decision, and yet I found out about this at the last minute, and all the families that I have talked to were unaware of this decision, and they were outraged. So many people were so upset about this and feel like there's nothing they can do now because this decision is made, even though there is an appeals process, which I hope that the Board decides to pursue. So why did they make this decision is the other question. And when you look at their four criteria, and the four that they are supposed to look at first before they look at other criteria, safety is number one, and going over the pass in school buses is not a safe thing to do. And the second one is loss of instructional time. Students are going to have to leave early and are going to have a significant loss of instructional time. For my kid that's on the honors track, that is going to be a huge impact on her. And the third criteria is added expense, and the quote is that it'll be $700,000 in money that will go to Portland charter buses, because we don't have enough school bus drivers that will be able to drive the buses across the pass. So those three things alone are, in my mind, a deal-breaker. And yet, the reason we're doing this is so that Bend can have more competition, and to me, that does not outweigh the safety of our students and their educational opportunities. And I'm done, right? Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions? No.
Okay, is it Berji?
Pretty close.
Sorry.
Benji.
Is it Benji?
Good evening. My name is Benji Orozco. I live at 1438 Crest Hill Avenue Northwest. My wife, Michelle, and I are raising six kids in West Salem that are currently in the schools in West Salem. I'm here to talk about the OSAA decision to redistrict Bend into our league. I recently watched on CCTV the testimony given at that meeting, and I believe that the folks that presented are way more eloquent in presenting all the points that contribute to adding Bend to our league as a bad idea. I'm just here simply to request to you, because three of my daughters will be affected by this change, that you, as a Board, unanimously appeal this with OSAA. I have a personal experience with OSAA in regards to my oldest son, went through the process to get him approved for participation as a fifth-year senior because of medical issues he had stemming the beginning of his sophomore year through his high school career. And I know that through that process, I too, I also learned a lot about OSAA and the appeal. I was here at the meeting, I think it was last month, Mr. Decopoulos, when you spoke about the process, and left that meeting pretty disappointed with just the tone of the meeting. I felt defeated. I felt like a Board that's here to represent our students, our kids. Kind of, the message I got from that meeting was, there's not much we can do, and even so, if that's true, I still want to fight. I want a Board that's going to fight for my kids. I want a Board that's going to stand up for what is right, and so I hope that unanimously you guys appeal that decision, and that's what I'm here to ask. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, that finishes our list. Thank you very much. We'll now move on down the agenda. Action item, the first action item is the appointment of community members to the Budget Committee. Let's see, I see we have some of the applicants here. So do we want to have them, I have to ask a question. Were these, the list, the order that we have, that, the order they came in?
That's the alphabetical order.
Alphabetical order, okay, let's just do it that way. Is, we'll ask you to come up, we'll give you a minute to make a statement, and then we will do our voting. So the first one is Jim Edmonds, and I understand he is not here this evening. He did send in a statement, which I will read. "My interest in the Budget Committee comes from many years as a student in the Salem Kaiser school system, as well as a parent of four children who attend Salem Kaiser Schools. I was honored to serve on the Citizens Facilities Task Force and found the committee's work to be interesting and productive. Participation on that committee prompts me to apply for the Budget Committee position to continue learning about and contributing to the success of our schools. I am a public school advocate that believes our school system plays a critical role in contributing to the social and economic foundation of our community. Thank you for considering my application." The next person, if she's here, would be Christine Erickson. Okay, she appears to be here.
Good evening. I'm Christine Erickson. In the interest of brevity, I'll give you the short version of my credentials and then move on to why I want to be on the District's Budget Committee. I've served as a budget analyst for the state of Oregon for 23 years, and I'm currently a lead senior fiscal analyst for the Oregon Health Authority. I have previously held a license to teach in the state of Oregon in secondary education. My endorsements were in chemistry and integrated science. I'm a product of a public school education, and I credit that education for my successes in life. I have lived in the district for 28 years, and my son received a primary and secondary education in the district. I believe that every child in our district should be able to receive a free and equitable public education. I have been seeking an opportunity to give back to the educational community, and a position on the Budget Committee would be the best use of my talents and expertise. I have experience in public budget building and execution, and I know that I can make a positive and effective contribution to the Budget Committee. Thank you."
Thank you. Okay, the next one would be Victoria Gomez. Victoria. Okay. Victoria sent in a statement. "I recently read about the need to fill the vacancies for community members in the Budget Committee. Raised by immigrant parents, they did not get the opportunity to be involved in my education as much as they wanted to, and I do not want to repeat that with my child. Getting the opportunity to be involved in this community will give me insight of the good and difficult decisions the Board makes. It will be great to assist in making a difference for our Salem Kaiser students." Okay, next would be Kathleen Harder.
Chair Kylo, Vice Chair Lee, Directors, and Superintendent Perry, it's so great to see you guys again. As a product of public schools, as my family has all been, I am very much an advocate for the promise of a quality public education. Over the last two years, as a participant on the Citizens Facilities Task Force and during my candidacy for School Board Director, I got to know a lot about the intricacies of this district with its unique challenges and opportunities. I spoke with students, parents, teachers, administrators, local and state officials about this district. I would be remiss, as we approach Thanksgiving, not to express my thanks and all our communities' thanks to the teachers and staff and their tireless efforts to work with our students and give them the education they deserve, along with so much of their own personal resources. Yet, with this dedication, we still see that our at-risk kids are still not reaching the goals that we have set forth. It has remained elusive. Funding alone is not going to change those statistics. However, if I am on the Budget Committee, I will be a tireless advocate for educational equity, to be sure that all of our budgetary allocations are based on the commitment that we have made, to be sure that all of our children have the opportunity to succeed. Thanks for your consideration."
Thank you. Okay, next would be Adam Kohler. Adam? I don't see, and I don't have a statement. Okay, Anna Kramer. Anna Kramer. No. Okay. Adriana Miranda?
Good evening, Budget, sorry, good evening, Board Members. My name's Adriana Miranda. I am a resident of Salem Kaiser for the last 27 years of my life, and I'm also a parent of three, two of whom are Salem Kaiser School District. Secondly, I had the opportunity to do a bit of international travel, both as a student but also as an English teacher in South Korea, and I believe that I bring both an Oregon perspective but also experiences internationally that will help to come up with creative solutions when we're looking at the budgetary process. Thirdly, as someone who has chosen Salem as the place for myself and also with my partner to settle down and raise a family, I know that if I take an interest in my child's education when they're in school, it's too late. I believe I owe it to them to take an active role in providing a quality education before they're entering our public schools. Lastly, to talk about what I believe I can bring to the table is, first, the perspective of being, I believe, a success story of public schools. Secondly, having both experience in the classroom, being an English teacher, and that international perspective, but also bringing a sense of a vision for where we can go as a community to improve the educational outcomes for our students. And I would be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. And Virginia Stapleton. Is Virginia Stapleton here? Okay. Apparently not. So, School Board members, Alice will distribute ballots. Of course. Thank you. Can you do that? Please vote for three, and then we will send them down to Mr. Decopoulos for his tabulation.
Need a marker.
Director Goss votes for Edmonds.
Good thing we changed the case.
Kohler.
That's right.
And Stapleton.
Director Blossey votes for Harder, Olson, and Miranda.
Director Hyam votes for Edmonds, Kohler, and Stapleton.
Director Chair Kylo votes for Erickson.
That's my new name.
Gomez. And Stapleton.
Director Riphold votes for Edmonds, Olson, and Stapleton.
Director Lee votes for Gomez, Harder, and Kohler.
And Director Green votes for Harder, Miranda, and Stapleton.
So you have elected Stapleton. Next ballot.
Next ballot. Anyone have any statements they wish to make at this time?
Vote for two.
Okay. We will now vote. Vote for two. Vote for two.
Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton.
Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton. Yeah, right. Vote for Stapleton.
Director Lipold votes for Edmunds. Director Hyam votes for Edmunds. Director Jefferson Tylo votes for Harder. Director Greed votes for Harder. Director Lee votes for Harder. Director Vlasse votes for Harder. And Director Goss votes for Edmunds. Harder prevail.
Thank you. Thank you. I assume we'll take proper steps to notify them and let them know when the meetings start, which are what, next week?
Maybe after Christmas.
Maybe after Christmas, okay.
I do want to just mention, too, that we had a really good turnout of candidates this time and only three positions. And it was really nice to see the variety. And so for those that showed up tonight, I want to thank you for that because it's really nice to see that level of engagement.
Okay. Chuck?
I'd like to echo those comments from the superintendent. Sat through for 10 years, many, many budget meetings are not a lot of fun. But to see this kind of interest from the community to apply for the three positions is, I think, really commendable. And for those of you who weren't successful, I hope that you continue your interest and come to the budget meetings, give us your input during public testimony, and consider running again. That all nine candidates had outstanding resumes. And these decisions are not easy ones, but I just want to thank you personally for your interest in the district and the budget process and ask you to please stay involved and help us. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Chuck, Jesse?
I just want to take the time to thank everybody who applied, just because as we were going through these, we had plenty of time to do so. And everybody, we have such great applicants who applied to this. So here's what I would say to you. I mean, the school board budget isn't the only thing that's out there, so of course, run for other things, just because our community, it takes all of us. It takes all of us working as a team and everybody willing to stand up in order for us to prosper. And I think, I think we really saw a lot of heart, especially with everybody who came and spoke today. So thank you for taking the time to do that. And thank you for taking that risk. Appreciate that. And then I look forward to working with you guys. I mean, we're, if there's people who were elected, we're going to be seeing each other a lot. So I look forward to seeing you guys and look forward to ensuring that we're being fiscally responsible. So thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on. Next item would be Oregon School Activities Association redistricting response. Superintendent Perry.
All right, in your board packet is a background information and a recommendation by staff to appeal the district, the OSAA decision regarding placing our Salem schools in a league with bend. And in addition to this recommendation, I, and regardless of your decision tonight, I am going to put together a community group of parents that I think there's other avenues we need to look at besides just the appeal process. So I have initiated a outreach toward the high schools to put together of a committee of two to, one to two parents from each feeder system to really look at, if we do appeal, they can help monitor the process, they can understand OSAA and their bylaws, they can understand the impact of if we did withdraw from OSAA. They can also keep up to date on the scheduling process. We are beginning the scheduling process with our bend athletic directors. And also determine if there's any changes we want to push with OSAA regardless of the outcome of any appeal. So on top of whatever decision you make, I'll initiate that group regardless of the appeal and the process. So with that, I would recommend that we appeal the decision to Oregon School Athletics Association regarding the redistricting for the four years and that will start next year.
Okay, Marty?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to direct the chief operating officer to work with legal counsel to appeal the decision by the OSAA executive board to include the three bend schools as part of the Greater Valley Conference.
Okay, is there a second?
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, Mr. Lipold. Anyone like to speak to their motion? Marty?
You know, in addition to all the reasons we've seen, we've gotten lots of emails from parents, you know, the safety, the travel time. We're looking at seven hours, you know, the lost school time, kids being up late. I think there's an additional thing that somebody pointed out to me is, you know, we do have a high level of poverty in our schools. And imagine a student at one of our schools who maybe has one parent and may or may not have a car. You know, you've got a midnight curfew and they may not come back until midnight or one or two. Are they going to be walking down Lancaster to get home? Or is some, some single parent having to leave little kids at home or wake them up to go pick up their student? And so I, I can see that, you know, for the, it's not good for any of us, but even more so for the families in that situation.
Jesse?
I would also like to add that when all of us ran for this position, we all said that we were going to do the best that we can to help our kids succeed, which missing school isn't one of them, especially for that amount of time. And so with a state that already has such a low graduation rate in comparison to others, I think it's really imperative that we, that we make a top priority attendance. I think that's such a huge thing and it's proven to help kids succeed. And then on top of that, we also said that we are going to try our best to be fiscally responsible with the taxpayers' funding. And so I think that this isn't a financially responsible move for the OSAA to do that to our district. And on top of that, I think it's also important that they understand that in the, at the end of the day, it's the people who decide this, not them.
Anyone else? Kathy, then Jim?
I think it's really important that we all understand that parents in our Salem area are the ones who have been able to put this forth. And I'm extremely proud of coming from a district where parents will stand up for what they want. I'm proud of you.
Okay, Jim?
Mr. Chair, I was just wondering, I see in the board plate here, it says that legal counsel explained the appeal. Could he just refresh our recollection with regard to where the appeal goes from here?
Hopefully.
So I did explain during your last board meeting that under the old law, the appeal went to the State Board of Education. And that is no longer true because the statute has been repealed. So the appeal goes directly to the Executive Board of OSAA. And they then appoint a hearings officer under a process that's not well-understood. It's not really explained in Rule Number Nine of the OSAA handbook. But they, they do, they will have some kind of a contested case hearing from this appeal. That appeal, according to the OSAA rules, could be appealed to Circuit Court, which in your case would be Marion County Circuit Court, under a process that's not explained either. So that's the essential trajectory of an appeal to OSAA, the appointment of a hearings officer who will develop a process and notify the district about the process. And we will participate in the process, and then there will be a decision.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Sharon?
So to Benji, I appreciate your comment that you made, that you said when you left here, the last time we met, that you felt very deflated. And I think that's how I felt as well. Until I started getting the email after email after email after email from parents reminding us of what our role is. And as you very articulately said tonight, you want a board that's going to fight for you and your children. And so I would absolutely support this. But I would also say, too, that during this appeal process, or whatever the outcome is, we did make a commitment that we will not, to the extent that we can, put our children in harm's way as we do within the district here locally, you know, looking at inclement weather and, and really making sure that each time we send them across the pass, if that's what we have to do, that we are very mindful about when we do that and how we do that. So, but thank you for coming out and speaking for all the emails.
Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, all of those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, what?
Aye. I was just a latecomer.
Just a late, all right. All of those opposed, say nay. Nay. So the motion carries six one. Okay. So moving on, the next item would be the consent calendar. Does someone wish to poll anything from the consent calendar? Marty?
Yes. I just put my, I'd like to poll two items, two grants.
You want to poll the grants?
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else? Sharon?
Grants as well.
Grants. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor of accepting the personnel actions as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Grant items. Marty, which item do you want to poll?
G18X1, CTEC program equipment grant.
Okay.
And G18P1, secondary career pathway funding. And I would just like some more information.
What was it? C1?
G1, sorry. G1.
Okay, Marty, we're having trouble hearing you down at this end.
Okay.
Secondary career pathway funding.
Okay, and Sharon, which one did you want to discuss?
So mine is the Measure 98, the G1898 High School Success Secondary Education Grant.
Okay, all right. Who would like to share about those or answer questions? Superintendent Perry?
You're going to do, you're not going to do the consent first?
We already did.
Oh, I missed that. Sorry, I was keeping track of not where we were. So Kelly, Assistant Superintendent Carlisle, can you address the Measure 98? And go through each one, and then I'll pick up where you can't.
Well, Measure 98, also now known as the High School Success Measure, has three components.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Kelly, is this G, you're addressing G18X1?
No, I'm addressing G1898, High School Success.
We should do them in order, but okay. All right.
All right, so the Measure 98 funding has three components to it. One is for the expansion of CTE programs. Another component is dropout prevention, and then the final piece is credit acceleration. So in the CTE expansion, we look at two specific strategies. One is to notice where we've had high enrollment and high student participation in programs. And our strategy there is to provide additional offerings of those courses within the programs at the comprehensive high school sites. And we've got a listing of what those programs are in case you'd like to hear that level of detail. We also are looking at bringing in new programs. And so for instance, at CTEC, where we've done our expansion of two new programs, all of the new staffing associated with those programs are being funded out of this, this measure. Additionally, we've introduced two new programs at Roberts High School. So those students are now accessing CTE at Roberts.
Questions? Sharon?
Could you describe those two programs and how they'll address? So my understanding is Measure 98 dollars are geared overarching towards addressing graduation rates. So can you tell us a little bit more about those two programs and how they look at graduation rates?
Yeah, we, thank you for the question. I think what we were noticing was that due to their geographic locations, the Roberts programs oftentimes need more access to CTE programs there on site. And so we have the opportunity to bring in education and teaching and then also business entrepreneurship to the Roberts campuses. And that involves additional tools, texts, supplies, equipment, and staffing for those, those programs. Our belief is that these programs will provide new avenues, new pathway programming and planning opportunities for the students. And they'll be highly engaging and motivating.
Yes, Sharon?
Thank you. Just one last question. I wasn't sure what the 1.5 million for support is for.
When we break out the kinds of staffing and expenditures that we're investing in, we look at instruction being those things that are directly related to teachers delivering instruction to the students. Support might be more in the area of classified assistant, classified employee in the office as we expand the programs, and we need more support staffing for that.
Other questions on this item? Okay, which item do you wish to address next?
All right, so next we'll go to CTEC Program Equipment Grant was the next question. These are the funds to purchase the startup equipment for our unmanned autonomous system, our drone technology and robotics program at the Career Technical Education Center. This funding comes to us from Community Resource Trust. We purchased the equipment, and then it's a reimbursement grant program for the equipment out at CTEC. This is part of Mountain West's commitment to us in that they're building out the program and funding equipment.
Does that answer your questions?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions about this? All right, and then G18P1.
Got it. Secondary pathways funding. This is the funding that comes to us when we have students that are in a pathway program and they are taking at least, I think it's one credit. And we also get additional weighting in the formula for if they're diverse students. And these are tied to specifically programs at each school. So you'll see broken down by each, the CTE Center, McKay McNary, each of the high schools, how much money they got for each program. That, those dollars are specifically for that program. And our CTE Coordinator, Jim Orth, works directly with the teachers and how to spend those dollars. And you'll see only programs on this list that are approved ODE pathway programs. So this is why you only see one program at CTEC, because over time, we will get them to be state-certified programs.
Any other questions?
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, then I will. Chuck?
Because of my, because of my association with CTEC, I'm going to declare a potential conflict of interest as it relates to the CTEC grants.
Okay. Anyone have an issue with Chuck voting? Let's see, injections. All right, all those in favor of accepting the grant budget as presented and is now discussed and explained, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, and the motion passes?
One abstention.
One abstention. Thank you, Chuck. Okay. So moving on to the next item, which would be the readings, 8A. I heard noises. Jim? Okay. So this would be the resolution to adopt the bylaws of the Oregon School Boards Association. As they have undergone some changes, is there someone who would like to move this? Chuck?
Also move?
So move, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Jesse, for the second discussion. Jesse, you have a question? Go ahead.
So moving this to a nonprofit makes it tax exempt. And from what I hear, it's, the only part that they're getting taxed on currently is the investments. Is that correct?
I don't know, Mr.?
Jim?
Currently, we're not being taxed on anything, Jesse.
Oh, then what does this change?
This gives us the certainty that we won't be on a going-forward basis.
Got it.
So currently, we hold the building in a trust with the League of Oregon Citizens, the Association of Oregon Counties and OSBA. That has been a tax-exempt property. We had a parking lot that OSBA purchased that is also tax-exempt. And then we built another parking lot, which was the subject of an appeal from Marion County. We won that appeal up at the Oregon Tax Court to continue it to be non-property taxable. This is to give more certainty for those issues.
So just to clarify, it's already not paying taxes on the investments that it has for OSBA?
Correct, Jesse.
Okay.
Kathy?
So does this extend to any future property purchases will be exempt?
It would depend, Kathy, on the use of that property and whether it would fit within the guidelines of falling under a nonprofit corporation entity in order for that property to be considered tax-exempt. If it was used to the benefit of the association, then yes. If it was used for other purposes, then no, it would not be tax-exempt.
Just curious, do you lease spots on that parking lot to?
We lease spots on both parking lots to the state of Oregon. And those dollars go into assets for the use of the members of OSBA.
Good. Any other questions about this item? Any other comments about this item? Mr. Lee? Is that for everybody? I heard you saying something to Jim. I just didn't know we were all, we're supposed to hear. Okay. All right, all of those in favor?
Mr. Chair, I don't think we're voting tonight.
Oh, yep, it's a first reading.
First reading, okay, sorry.
If we're voting, I do have to declare a conflict of interest in my.
I thought we already did have this.
No.
Okay, moving on. We are into reports.
All right, the next report is Executive Limitations, Staff Compensation and Professional Development. This is the fifth of 12 monitoring reports scheduled for 1718. And if you look through this executive limitation, which you've seen in your board packet, there are no evidences of non-compliance. And there's no recommendations or pending executive limitation issues that I need to identify at this time.
Any questions? Any questions? Any comments? Although, all right, we don't vote to accept these, we just either agree by consensus or we don't. So thumbs up if you accept the report, sideways if you can live with it, and if you have a problem, thumbs down. Director Goss? Okay, the report is accepted. Thank you.
You can tell I don't have my hearing aids tonight. I apologize.
Nice. All right, next item, Strategic Plan Report, Monitoring Reports. Okay, and this is, Lillian?
Yes, Lillian Govis will give the Strategic Plan Report Number Eight, Development of Community Engagement Strategies in Support of Short and Long Range Facilities Plans to Address Student Enrollment and Program Needs.
Thank you so much. We have been busy the last two months since I've been here. Our team has been very actively addressing an engagement strategy to ensure that we are going to our community and providing information, the news that they can use. As you can see, we have strengthened our strategies both digitally with the implementation of both internal and external newsletters. Those internal newsletters go to more than 7,000 recipients. External newsletters go to more than 26,000 recipients. We've implemented an inside-out approach to relaying information so that our employees, our focus is to make sure that our employees get their information about Salem Kaiser Public Schools from Salem Kaiser Public Schools. Our digital newsletters have open rates that are about six percentage points above the industry average, which signals to us that people are getting information that they really have been missing out on and are excited about. Certainly, in our next external newsletter, we'll include the information about your vote to, on the OSAA ruling. And so in addition to that, we've also begun implementing our strategies around community relations, strengthening that program. We've been to more than 18 community and neighborhood association meetings to provide top-line information about our facilities, plans, and projected needs. Of course, we have the information from Portland State University about where our population is going to go. And so we want to make sure that we are recognizing that we've got some serious needs when it comes to overcrowding in classrooms. And also coupling that with the long-range facilities plan to ensure that people know that we have some proposed solutions. Coming up, we will, we're developing a calendar of community events, opportunities for us to appear at, in places where the community already is. I know farmers markets are a wonderful place because you get a lot of people who are walking through the neighborhood. But what else? How can we partner with our faith community, with existing sports leagues, and with our populations who don't speak English as a first language, who may otherwise have some reservations about coming into the schoolhouse? How do we go and get to them? So we're working on that calendar now so that following the holidays, we will be very active and have a strong presence in our community so that people understand how we're addressing our needs and what our long-range plan is. In addition, the thing that I'm really excited about, and Chuck may be super excited about this, too, is an opportunity with our CTE programs where we know our graduation rates are extremely high when students are involved in CTE. What we don't know is how much our parents understand that. So we're looking at developing a CTE Parent Academy where our parents can get those free classes from our CTE instructors. So folks like me can go to the schools and learn how to change my tires or, and rotate my tires and change my oil from our CTE instructor. Folks like me can learn how to fly a drone, which is really cool. And folks like me can go and learn from our culinary arts leaders about how to create a healthy meal for my family on a budget. And so those are some opportunities that we'll be rolling out in the new year, not only to highlight our CTE programs that are so strong, but really be a resource for our community. I hope I didn't talk too fast.
Can I add one thing I think you might have missed? Launching a new website on December 18th. And we'll roll that out to you in phases through our community newsletter. But just to be aware, we are rolling out a new, new website.
It looks really great. Bob Silva's team has done a remarkable job. And it, it will be more than just a static website. It'll be more interactive. And it will, it will include our Twitter feed front and center so that during periods of crisis, during breaking news, during special board votes, all of that information will be right there on, on our front page of our website, even if you don't use social media.
Great, thank you. At this time, without any objection, I would like to take a five-minute break. Five minutes? Agenda would be information, and that's the board calendar. I would direct the board members, remind them that we have a work session on November 28th. We have a special meeting on November 30th, and that will be at Lancaster Professional Center. And we have a special meeting on December 4th, and that will also be at the Lancaster Professional Center. So those are two changes in our locations, and we will be starting each of those at 5:00 o'clock. Okay? Next item. The next item would be public comment on non-agenda items. The first one we have is Rachel Dewey Thorsett.
Hi, I'm Rachel Dewey Thorsett. I live at 325 Lincoln Street South in Salem, 97302. And I'm here to talk about the mandated reporter policy. I was quite taken aback to find out. I was quite taken aback to find out that mandated reporters are being asked to report sexually active teens. I've talked to a number of people about this and been told basically, well, that's what the law is, there's nothing we can do. And what I'm asking is that the district take a more proactive position on this. This is a harmful and basically absurd policy. It puts students who need to be talking to adults about complex decisions in their lives in a difficult position. Many students want to be able to talk to people outside their family about these issues, and this is basically saying, no, this may become something semi-criminal if you do this, and this is a harmful policy for kids. So what I'm asking is that the district certainly ask for some really specific guidance on the state about whether this is something that, that this is really what they mean, but not just to kind of read between the lines. And, you know, if push comes to shove, to look for legislative solutions for it. In the meantime, until you get some kind of guidance like that, I'd ask that you rescind the interpretation of the policy. What I'm certainly asking you not to do is just shrug and say, this isn't something we can do anything about. This is a policy that is harmful to your students. It's a policy that asks hundreds of educators to face a choice between being scofflaws and doing things that they believe are going to actively harm the students they work with. And I don't want this to become something that just gets shrugged off as, oh, the legislature has to deal with it, or we deal with it, but it sends the wrong message about teen sex. This is something that it's really important for the district to be facing head-on and being part of the leadership to get it changed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Lori Lassen, and I live at 3731 Augusta National Drive South. I'm here on another issue, but I wholeheartedly agree with the presenter that just came up, but that's a whole nother issue. I'm more concerned about teachers bringing guns to school. So imagine my surprise to find out over social media that weekend that some teacher at Sprague, Mr. Johnston, had strapped on a gun or brought a gun to school. You know, talk about scary when you have a junior and senior at Sprague and learning about this through social media. Mr. Swanson was gracious to answer my questions on Monday, and for some reason, although I get notified of every single tardy that my two boys often have, I got no notification about this. I have a lot of concerns after talking to somebody at the district yesterday, Kathleen, Catherine Novi, I think her name was, Director of Employee Relations. The impression that this teacher maybe shuffled to another school. I don't know what's going on, I understand this is a personnel issue, but I want it on the record that I think the teacher should be held to a higher standard than students. If students are expelled for guns at school, teachers should not work in Salem Kaiser with students. I demanded to be notified if this teacher was coming back to the school. I didn't hear anything, but a teacher told me over the weekend, or a parent told me over the weekend that it's their understanding that he's not returning to Sprague. So I think there's some issues with the notification process, and Mr. Swanson was really great about helping me with that. But I'm concerned about what happens to somebody who exhibits this type of incredibly poor judgment and why he would be allowed back around students, never mind the fact that he's teaching his Christianity in his science classes, which is a whole nother subject. So, yes.
You have one minute.
Oh, I think I'm done, so that was good timing, but I just, I think that I am concerned about this process. I don't think that there appears to be the same structure for, unless I'm misunderstanding the representative at the district, that teachers should be let go if they do something this egregious. And I know there's a union involved, but this is beyond the pale for me. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mindy Merritt?
Superintendent Perry, Board Chair Kylo, Vice Chair Lee, and members of the board, my name is Mindy Merritt, and I reside at 2381 Teal Drive Southeast, and I'm here tonight to speak to you as President of the Salem Kaiser Education Association regarding the district's interpretation of the mandatory reporting policy. Salem Kaiser Education Association proudly consists of 2,400 members, who serve over 41,000-plus students within our schools. As educators, we do everything in our power to protect our students. Their health and safety is a foundational priority. As professionals, we take our responsibility, our responsibility as mandatory reporters extremely seriously because we know that proper reporting helps keep our students safe. For our members to properly fulfill our duties as mandatory reporters, we must have clear and consistent guidance on what should be reported. These guidelines must endeavor to create a balance between student safety and an environment where students feel comfortable confiding sensitive information to a trusted educator. This is an especially delicate matter when educators, who are also parents and need to have private conversations with their own children. We are extremely concerned that the Salem Kaiser School District's new mandatory reporting guidelines jeopardize this trust and could have a counterproductive impact on student safety. We also hope that DHS and law enforcement will provide clear and consistent instructions around reporting requirements to ensure we are doing everything we can to continue to protect our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Warren, starts with a B, Ben, I want to say Benfree?
She had to leave.
She had to leave, okay, all right. Then the last one is Nancy McMorrisodics. I'll remind you, you have three minutes.
I really thought about just coming up and rambling for like 25 minutes, just for the fun of it.
We knew that, that's why I was pointed out, you have three.
Chair Kylo, Superintendent Perry, members of the board, my name is Nancy McMorrisodics. I reside at 445 Candelaria Boulevard Southeast. I planned to come tonight to implore you all to work for a sensible solution to the mandatory reporting of teen sex conundrum, but then I read the paper this morning. Now I would like to commend the work of McNary students Kimberly Scott and Melissa McDougall, their principal Eric Jespersen, Superintendent Perry, Communications Director Lillian Govis, Senator Gelsner, and Representative Bill Post in working to find a legislative remedy. Teen pregnancy is probably the single most significant factor in damaging a student's chance to complete high school. In addition, the consequences of teen pregnancy inequitably is borne by girls. No pun intended there. Marion County ranks third in numbers of pregnancies age 10 to 17. Our teen pregnancy rate is much higher than other large counties. They maybe have more numbers, but our rate is significantly higher. The most results, recent results of the Oregon Healthy Teens Survey of 11th graders in Oregon shows greater than 41% of respondents report they are sexually active. Further, the study tells us that 16% report onset of intercourse at age 14, 29% at age 15, 34% at age 16. Removing trusted adults such as school employees leaves teens with less access to reliable information about protection from pregnancy and infection. Though the district is clearly following the letter of the law in training staff to report all students who are under 18 and engaging in consensual sex, I am pleased to hear of your efforts to make the law reflect the reality of teen behavior today. I am especially pleased to see the efforts of two female high school students working on both sides of the aisle to make this change. Great hands-on learning. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Okay, that finishes that. We're now up to board activities. Anyone like to report on what they've been doing, what they've been participating in? Marty?
I really like this time of year because we have all the plays going on. I was able to go to The Odd Couple, the female version, at McKay, and I'm sure all the other high schools have different plays going on right now, and I was really glad to see the number of people at McNary for the listening tour that we're having related to the bond measure.
Great. Jesse?
So I'm still on my mission to visit as many schools as I can, and I visited Halk Middle School just the other week, and it was really cool just to see everybody, see what they're doing, and I've really been trying to dive deep into the programs just to see what we're doing as a board and how it reflects in the classroom. And so I was really, I was really happy to see a lot of the positive, and all the positive energy and every, the positive outlooks on the effects of the decisions we've been making and how it's been affecting the classroom, as well as the bond that we have coming up. I've spent a lot of time looking into certain aspects of the bond to make sure that we're doing things for a good reason, also being fiscally responsible, which, I mean, it's our job to do. And so I've had the opportunity to visit a lot of our schools and see the sites that we're going to be changing, to, of course, clarify for myself whether or not there is a need, and also just to ensure that we're, we have the best possible plan to enact that. So I've visited a lot of schools such as, I mean, Auburn, seeing the overcrowding, as well as Swigold, their gym, as well as comparing them to other gyms that we have to see what we can do to better make things fiscally responsible, which we're doing a good job so, so far, I believe.
Okay. Anyone else? Kathy?
So I've been busy too. I was at the North Salem Listening and Learning Session on our bond issue, and it was interesting. I was pleased to go there and through North Salem on my way. The other thing I did this time was to be interviewed by the editor of the West Salem High School paper, and it was delightful. There were three members of her staff that came and interviewed me, asked wonderful questions, and I'm very anxious to see it come out in their local paper, what on the 4th, I think, of December, so I'm anxious.
Okay, anyone else? Chuck?
One week, I happened to be out at CTEC last week on Tuesday, and very pleased to have Governor Kate Brown come and take a tour, talk with the students. She got to fly a drone in the UAS portion of the building, and it was good to have her out to see CTEC, and I think she came away most impressed with the students, their professional attitude and, and how they interacted with her was, was something to see. So we've had Senator Wyden out there, we've had Senator Merkel, Merkley, and also Chris Schrader have been out, along with a lot of state representatives and other people. So it was great to see the governor in our school district last week.
Good. Anyone else? Jim, Sharon?
I would, I would like to say, I'm sure we all attended the Crystal Apples.
Oh, yeah.
Which we somehow missed mentioning.
Well, that was last meeting.
Was that? Ah.
You're in trouble, buddy.
It's been a long time.
It wasn't, Chuck, sorry.
I'm sorry, but November 4th was Crystal Apple, and our last board meeting was, oh, yeah.
Would you like to say anything about the Crystal Apple, Chuck? You've had a lot in your mind.
Congratulations to all of those outstanding educators that were nominated. Again, it was a great evening.
Yes.
The emcee is always outstanding, lot of humor, and it's just exciting to see the quality of educators that we've got, and it's always nice to see them get recognized on the red carpet and during the program.
Right, okay, great. And I had the opportunity to lead, help, help lead the flag salute with Salem Mayor Chuck Bennett at Leslie Middle School when Andrew Young was here, Ambassador Young, so, plus other visits out to schools. So Superintendent Perry, up to you.
All right, well, I think you've seen enough of what I've been up to lately that has involved my time, so I do really want to do a shout out to our two students at McNary High School and their work around this issue. They were extremely professional at the Capitol and have both decided they might have a future in politics or lobbying, so that was a really good experience, and they've just helped us get some really good direction and clarity around this issue. I'm continuing to monitor and seek guidance each day as things evolve, so I just want to, I appreciate your support, and I actually appreciate the support of our community around both the OSAA issue and around the mandatory reporting issue because it really helps us clarify and get the fixes we need. So thank you to each of you for your support over the last week as we work through some challenging issues within the district.
That's it?
That's it.
Wow. Okay, with that, I believe we are adjourned unless someone objects.
Oh, I object.
Oh, Marty objects, so we're, no. We are, we are adjourned. Thank you.